Okay, it's 7:30 official Verizon time. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first village board meeting of the 2020-2021 fiscal year of the Village of Woodbury Village Board. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I have the flag behind me and a moment of silence for all those that have suffered throughout this crisis, including those that have been killed or injured in the recent riots. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, first item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing on introductory local law number one of 2018. That's not a mistake, amending chapter 310 of the village code. Desiree, can you please read the notice?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, because my iPods just zapped out from Saturday.
iPod?
Yeah, I heard that.
Bud.
So let it go.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I'm old. Okay, a public hearing is being held in the same public comments on introductory local law one of 2018, amending chapter 310 of the code of the village of Woodbury by creating a subsection 31.4 entitled Water Quality Protection Overlay District. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on June 1st, 2020, and the first public hearing on this law was held February 22nd, 2018. Amendments have been made to the law since then, and the revised law is what the public hearing is on this evening.
Thank you, Desiree. So the law was referred to the village planning board and to the county as required on the general municipal law 239. We've not received responses yet from either the planning board or the county, but their deadline to do so as required by law has not yet expired. We also already have scheduled a work session that will be held, and that'll be a Zoom meeting available to the public as well, after the June 25th, 2020 regular meeting to discuss and review all comments that are received with our consultants. So with that, we'll go out to the public. I'm going to unmute everybody in just a sec. Okay, everybody is unmuted. So let's start at the top of the list here. Mr. Meyer, do you have any comment?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gerber? Nope, okay.
Nope.
Thank you. Ed? Do you not know who Ed is? Okay, whoever is labeled as iPod, the first one, as opposed to iPod 44? All right, iPod 44? Mr. Zlada?
I'm not familiar.
Okay, Mrs. Hunter?
Nothing.
Thank you. Sandy? Okay, I don't think I missed anybody. But I missed a Wyatt.
Andy was muted, by the way, so I don't know if she had something to say.
Oh, so I'm sorry, Sandy, do you have anything?
Not at this time, thanks.
Okay, Sandy, thanks. All right, I don't think I missed anybody. Oh, Robin.
Robin and Neil?
I see you, Robin. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's all right. Actually, first of all, thank you for putting this forward. It's a great law, long overdue, but thank you for putting it forward. Appreciate it. Just a couple of thoughts, though, on page two, I'm reading right from the law, proposed law. The bottom of that paragraph, number two, on page two, the very bottom of that paragraph, it says, "The planning board shall have the discretion to determine how best to reconcile the requirements of this overlay district and the underlying district unless the building inspector or reviewing board makes a reason, makes a reason finding," I think it should be two, otherwise the more restrictive requirement will apply. To me, those two sentences are contradictory. So what I'm suggesting is leave it in the discretion of the planning board and take out that last sentence.
I will refer to counsel for a response.
Sorry, I was muted. I don't think that they're actually contradictory. I was just taking a look at that, Robin. Basically, what it is saying is that unless somebody makes a determination, otherwise the planning board, the building inspector, who's ever required to make it, the more restrictive requirements are required to apply. But this kind of gives the planning, the building inspector, if it's just, you know, a shed or whatever's being constructed, or the planning board, when reviewing all elements of a site plan, that gives them a little bit of leeway as to best reconcile that. So if something needs to be shifted or whatever, it just gives a little bit of leeway. But if they don't need that, then the most restrictive requirements are to apply.
Okay, I mean, it does say that. It was just a thought on my, on my head. Also, on page, between page four and also page seven, it talks about, right, the riparian zone. On page four, it talks about the land within 50 feet of a stream. But on page seven, it states that a minimum 50-foot understood riparian zone. So again, I'm just suggesting consistency, whatever the, you know, the decision is. To me, it's contradictory again, but that's just me.
No, I think that's a, that's a good point. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I agree, we should have consistent language.
Right.
Okay, Robin, you have anything else?
I don't, but Neil does. I don't mean to be a spokesperson.
Okay, just two technical things.
I'm sorry, Neil, could you just speak up just a little bit? I'm having a little trouble.
Everybody, you always said that. For years, you've said that. Couple tech, couple technical things and then the general comments. On page four, under protective structure, second, end of second line, it should be, what, contamination, I think? It's discharge of contain one, whatever.
Wait, you're on, on page four, what was this?
Page four, at the end, number five, at the end of the second line.
Ah, yes. I don't even know.
Neither do we, I didn't lie, Kelly.
That might be one of those weird scanning things where it changes.
Yeah, so I still, it's discharge of contamination or.
Amendments?
Yeah. Whatever, whatever that is.
Okay. I'm glad. I'll have to check the word document and see what word it's supposed to be.
Okay.
Hopefully, it doesn't change the complete meaning of the law.
The spacing of the.
If it does, just leave it the way it is.
Yeah, the spacing of it makes me think that there was some issue, and it is supposed to say contamination.
Yeah, that's what it should be. Yeah. Okay.
Anything else?
Page seven, I'm sorry, page seven, under riparian zone, number one, at the end.
Yes.
There's a line there, and what is supposed to be there?
That was something that we had been looking to Dennis Lindsay to fill in. I'm not sure if that's included in his memo to the board, but we are aware that there's a blank there. I just wanted to defer to Dennis to see if it's supposed to be whatever is longer, whatever is greater, whatever engineering term is going to be appropriate there for what the objective is.
Okay. And then I have a general comment. The law, the law is, I think, well-written. Or this is an amendment or whatever it is, but it is long overdue. There probably, you're probably going to get comments from representatives of various developments, maybe. But I think the board has, the board has taken into consideration that this is something they said they were going to do. Majority of, since you're sitting on the board, majority of the residents of Woodbury obviously voted for you. The majority of the residents in Woodbury are in favor of this. And I'm disappointed more people are not here or whatever responding to the public hearing. But I'm not surprised, just disappointed. Again, I think this is long overdue, well done, in my opinion. And since you're there and the majority of the people voted for you, I have to assume, and I only assuming here, that the majority of the voters of Woodbury, the people you represent, are in favor of this. That's it.
Thank you, Neil. So since we started comment on this new local law, there's been one or two other people that have joined, Mr. Brady in particular. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say as public comment on the public hearing for this law?
Craig Brady.
Go ahead, Greg.
I just want to echo Neil's last closing comments and add a somewhat tangential comment as well, that about a year ago, I had encouraged the board at the time to pursue a FOIL action for all the relevant materials on the testing at the former net parasite, which ties into water quality, especially if, given the context that was in the law that you're proposing here, the, there could be future use for the village of the Ramapo Aquifer. So I'd be looking to encourage you, if you haven't pursued that with the state DEC, to get all the relevant testing documents and what have you for that net parasite, to do that forthwith. But I think it's a great, great action, and I fully support the law.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make? I don't see any chat messages. I don't hear anybody else. Last chance. Okay, so with no further comments, may I please have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
Graziano with the motion, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Okay, can I now have a motion in a second to accept written comments on this until close of business on June 19th, 2020?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza, can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Trustee Burek, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, so that finishes up the public hearing. I'm at law. So now we're going to go out to the public for public comment on agenda items only. So I will once again unmute all. If anybody has anything to say, please let us know now.
Everybody's still muted, according to my computer.
They are, yep.
They have unmuted all. Anybody? Let me give everyone a chance. Okay, then we move on. I'm sorry. Jesus, did you say something?
It feels like they're all still muted.
I think they're muting themselves after I unmute them. Everybody's unmuted right now.
Yeah, when it pops up, I just hit stay muted, so I'm assuming everybody else is.
I agree. I think that's what's happening. They could also send me a text message. I want to give everyone a chance. Okay, I think we can move on. So now we're going to get into the organizational meeting. We do this at the first meeting of the fiscal year, and we do a semi-annual reorg in January as well. So we're going to start off with consultants for the village. Desiree, can you please read the list of consultants?
Yes, for the fiscal year 2021, engineers for the village, H2M Architect and Engineering, attorney for the village, Burke, Mealy, Golden, and Norton, nope, just Norton, Burke, Mealy, Golden, Norton, Nugent, McCartney, Hornfield, Rue, Newman, and Simeoni, and for planners for the village, Nelson, Pope, and Warhees, and attorney for the ZBA, Robert Dickover.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I please have a motion in a second to appoint the consultants as read by the village clerk for the fiscal year 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza?
I'll second.
Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on. Authorization to file for the engineer. And please have a motion in a second to authorize H2M Architects and Engineering as the engineer for the village to file applications to all regulatory agencies as required on behalf of the village of Woodbury in fiscal year 2020 to 2021 for those projects authorized by the village board.
Make that motion.
Trustee Gomez?
I'll second.
Trustee Burek with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, next item, I appoint trustee Andrew Jacomaza as deputy mayor. Next is membership. Sorry? Got a problem with that one? I was out of votes, sorry, no discussion. Membership and state associations. I need a motion in a second to authorize the village clerk to enroll the village as members with New York State Conference of Mayors, otherwise known as NICOM, the Orange County Association of Towns, Villages, and Cities, the Orange County Municipal Planning Federation, the Orange County Water Authority, MUDNA, and the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Designation of official newspaper. Can I have a motion in a second to designate the Times Herald Record as the official newspaper for the village of Woodbury?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza?
I'll second.
Trustee Burek, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Need a motion in a second to adopt the investment policy of the village of Woodbury as written.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano?
I'll second.
Trustee Burek, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye.
A mileage reimbursement food stipend. I need a motion in a second to reimburse members of the village government and its employees when on official business or duty for the village, the rate established annually by the Internal Revenue Services for the use of their personal vehicle, which includes gas and wear and tear, and that vouchers it to be completed and filed with the village treasurer before reimbursement is made.
That motion.
Trustee Gomez?
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Need a motion in a second to reimburse employees not more than $50 per day for food purchased while attending a board-approved conference or meeting that is held for an entire day and is for village-related issues, if not included in the registration cost. Alcohol will not be reimbursed, and complete receipts must be submitted with the voucher.
Make that motion.
Trustee Burek?
I'll second.
Graziano, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, board liaisons in appointed positions. Desiree, I'm going to let you read this list.
Certainly. Liaison to the town board would be Mayor Egan and trustee Jacomaza. To the planning board is trustee Graziano and trustee Gomez. To the zoning board is trustee Jacomaza and trustee Burke. Aide to the fire department is Mayor Egan and trustee Gomez. Aide to the water sewer department is Mayor Egan and trustee Graziano. Aide to the building department is Mayor Egan and trustee Burke. The highway department is Mayor Egan and trustee Jacomaza. The employee liaisons is Mayor Egan and trustee Jacomaza. And insurance liaisons is trustee Burke and trustee Gomez.
Okay, you need a motion in a second to establish those liaisons of the village board.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza and trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay. Need a motion in a second to appoint the individuals that Desiree is going to reinforce to the following positions. Des?
Bills officer for foils would be Mayor Egan, procurement officer would be Mayor Egan, fire police would be George Suet, Dennis Tinney, Christopher Salvo, and Charles Newth. Planning board chairperson, Christopher Gerver, and zoning board of appeals chairperson, Karen Unger.
Okay, motion in a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, trustee Gomez had his hand up first. We'll take the second from trustee Jacomaza. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye.
I abstain.
Trustee Burek abstains. Motion in a second to adopt the meeting procedures as written.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Burek?
I'll second.
Trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's like somebody's playing slots or something in the background.
I don't hear anything.
Somebody hearing like a.
I hear it.
Wishful on your part.
It might be.
I think what on the thing?
Oh.
It's open, but it's.
Oh, it's someone's dishwasher, okay. I want to, I want to come wash dishes at your house.
Girl, I'm at the restaurant.
Oh, okay.
Any, anybody that's not speaking, if you could just, I didn't hear a thing, but just keep the background noise thing. So can I have a motion in a second to adopt the procurement policy as written?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay. Need a motion and a second to adopt the 2020 to 2021 fee schedule as written.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza?
I'll second.
Trustee Burek, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Great. All right, that finishes the reorg. Thank you, everybody. Let's move on to administrative business. I need a motion in a second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held May 28th, 2020.
Make that motion.
Trustee Gomez, trustee Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I. Need a motion in a second to approve abstract number one of this fiscal year containing vouchers 2001 to 2081, totaling $258,192.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Burek?
I'll second it.
Trustee Jacomaza, I think, at the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I. We need to schedule the land preservation committee interviews, so I leave it up to the board. What's your pleasure? When would you like to discuss and perform?
Okay, let's look at the schedule.
Derek? Tyler?
Yeah, do you want to do it the way we did it with the prompt plan, the week of the meeting, the next meeting?
Good idea. Tuesday, Thursday, a week to meet.
Yeah.
Starting at 5:30 again?
Six.
How many? Six o'clock.
Can we do six?
You can do whatever time you want.
Will we have enough time?
Twenty minutes for each?
That's why we kicked it to 5:30, because we didn't have enough time.
Five thirty is usually my issue, but I do my best.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we schedule it at six? We'll cut them down to 15 minutes and go a little longer if we have to and try and get them done. Those two days.
Good.
Okay.
How many total do we have? Nine or 10?
I emailed them to you?
Yeah.
They didn't come up.
Yeah, I think it was 10. So let's try and do five each evening, and then no more than that if we can, six and four if we have to.
Yeah.
But we'll leave that, we'll leave that at Desiree's discretion, based on availability of the applicants. Sound good?
Yes, and, and once again, they will all confirm receipt of the email like they did last time.
Very good.
Twenty-third and twenty-fifth, starting at six o'clock.
Right, so with a motion in a second to schedule interviews to be held on, as trustee Jacomaza said, June 23rd and June 25th, both starting at six o'clock for 15 minutes each, proceeds on the land preservation committee.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Burek with the motion.
Second.
Graziano with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, so now we're going to have a discussion and vote of introductory local law number five of 2020 entitled Net Lot Area. Des, has there been any additional written comments received since the last meeting or since the comments we've already received?
No, there have not been.
Thank you. Kelly, do you have any comments or anything to add?
Yes, I just want to point out that what was distributed was the redlined version, so it showed the changes as suggested by the planning board and as suggested by Gary Thomasberger in our conversations with him. As far as secret goes, I had distributed probably a month, maybe two months ago, to you the full environmental assessment forms, as well as a negative declaration, which sets forth a reasoned elaboration why there would be no significant adverse environmental impacts from this. So before you take any action, I need you to complete secret, if you could, by assuming lead agency, typing the action as unlisted. If you have any questions about the FEAF, let me know. And issuing a negative declaration if you find that you agree with what is stated therein, based on your review of the environmental documents.
Do you want to touch on the changes we've made with regard to grandfathering of all?
Yes, sorry about that. Also, there is an inclusion of a new paragraph that does exempt from the application of this local law, any planning board, any application that has been before the planning board and has received a determination as far as secret, either a finding statement or a negative declaration that, so that they've completed the secret process. That was included at this board's request as well.
Great. Do any board members have any further questions or comments for Kelly? Okay, then at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion in a second to declare the village of Woodbury Village Board as lead agency for purposes of secret.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza?
I'll second.
Trustee Burek, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Need a motion in a second to declare this is an unlisted action.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Graziano? Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. And a motion in a second finally for a negative declaration of the secret.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Jacomaza, trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Kelly, any further action we need to take before we vote on this?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I need a motion in a second to adopt local law number five of 2020, amending chapter 310 entitled Zoning of the Code of the Village of Woodbury, amending the definition of lot area.
Um, um, um.
Trustee Graziano with the motion and trustee Jacomaza with the second. Any discussion?
No, 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 no.
Sorry?
He's making fun of himself.
Okay, just want to be clear on this.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll ask for a vote, and then we'll have the village clerk do a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Greg, can you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Trustee Jacomaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Graziano?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all. So now we're going to move on to new business, resolution in support of an assembly bill. So last week, I was contacted by Assemblyman Schmidt's office, asking for the village to support legislation that the Assemblyman is sponsoring at the request of the Mulkeen family to name a portion of the state highway in memory of NYPD detective Brian Mulkeen. So I'm going to be asking for a motion in a second to adopt the following resolution that I'll read in support of Assembly Bill A10376, whereas Assemblyman Colin Schmidt has introduced Assembly Bill A10376 entitled, "An Act to Amend the Highway Law in Relation to Designating a Portion of the State Highway System as Detective Brian C. Mulkeen Memorial Bridge End." Whereas the bill adds that the commissioner of transportation shall provide for the installation and maintenance of adequate signage of the state highway system, but to avoid confusion and to limit any possible disruption of commerce, the designation called for shall be one of ceremonial nature, and the official name of such bridge shall not be changed as a result of this bill. Now therefore be it resolved, excuse me, now therefore be it hereby resolved that the village board of the village of Woodbury requests the enactment of New York State Assembly Bill A10376, and be it further resolved that the village board authorizes the village clerk to transmit this resolution together with any necessary documentation to both houses of the New York State Legislature forthwith.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andrew. Another second? Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? Andrew, it looked like you had something to say. Okay.
No, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about aye? Anyone opposed? That's three. We need a roll call for that. It's a resolution. Desiree?
Mayor Egan?
Aye.
Trustee Burke?
Aye.
Jacomaza?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Thank you. So that concludes all of the new business, and I will go out to public comment. I will once again unmute everybody So that concludes all of the new business. So now we'll go out to public comment. I will once again unmute everybody so that we can go to the public. Anyone?
Yeah, hi. You guys are doing public comment now?
Yes.
All right. My name's Ed Hevle and I just, I just had a question. What's going on with the 19 Adams Street address?
Osweiler Building?
Is that the Osweiler Building? Okay, so we purchased that, as you may know, uh, last year in 2019. We're going to be moving the building department to that location for storage of records and their administration.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, yeah, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Anybody else?
Wait, is this public comment?
This is public comment. Identify yourself.
Okay, sorry, I can't, I have a lot of background. It's Annie.
Annie Mcginnis. Hi, good evening.
Hi. Um, I just want to take a second to, uh, thank the village board for, um, expeditiously handling the executive order to allow us to get back on our feet. Um, I have a question about why the executive order was issued for 8:30 PM when the noise ordinance for the village is 10 PM. And I'm hoping that maybe they'll extend it a little bit because we're noticing, uh, just in the last three days of being open, so it's not a trend, I would say, yeah. But a lot of people are back to work, so we're only busy from like the five o'clock hour to like the nine o'clock hour, and I'm having a hard time pushing people out the door by 8:30 because they're still in the middle of their meals.
Yeah, I understand that. I can tell you that the reason was because we wanted to make it as with limited impact to the building department with regard to enforcement, especially as it relates to lighting. We didn't want there to have to be any application with regard to lights or anything like that. And that was recommended by council and I agreed with that, but I certainly understand your, uh, your question and concern, and it's something we can speak about with the building department, and if necessary, we can try and modify that. I'll have to speak.
Okay, yeah, because I also had people asking about their dogs. Um, you know, I know other outside restaurants and stuff are allowed to have their dogs, and I saw that they were prohibited. So that was another question I had too. Because a lot of, you know, it's summertime, people are driving through, you know, they want to come with food and...
I can tell you that, and I'll ask Kelly to comment on this, but my guess is that it's the, it's because health department regulations would be the same for outside dining as they would be for inside dining, but Kelly, am I, am I close or?
It's really a recommendation to you in the building department. It was not contained in the executive order. It's up to you guys, but I would, before you make any change to that, I would reach out to the health department because there may be that restriction. It's essentially what was supposed to be happening is that these weren't becoming outdoor restaurants. It was basically allowing them to
Doing this to somebody.
Use the outside.
Yeah. And I understand that, but we're not allowed to have anybody inside, so I am an outside restaurant right now, so I'm just trying to make it work. I'm trying to keep people happy, but I'm also trying to keep the SLA happy, our neighbors happy too. So, you know, I, I understand if we have to concede a little bit and I, you know, but people are asking and I'm, I just don't want to have, you know, I, I don't want to be the troublemaker in this town. I have a good rapport with everybody. I like to keep it. But, uh, you know, it's hard to feed the whole town in three hours.
I certainly appreciate the comments and, uh, you know, we, we really wanted to get something done as quickly as possible to give the opportunity to restaurants like yourself and others in the community to start generating some revenue, and that was the goal, so.
Oh, no, we're totally thankful. It's not, you know, it's not a slap in the face. We're just kind of happy.
We're not taking it.
You know, if we can kind of be more in line with the noise ordinance, just as far as like getting everybody out of here, things cleaned up. Obviously, I don't want to have problems with my neighbors. I'm in a mixed zoned area, so, you know, but it's just, uh, we're noticing that people are back to work. Our busy times are only for dinner. We're not doing anything during the daytime hours, so, you know, um.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to council. I'll also speak to the code enforcement officer. It looks like Trustee Jacomazo has a comment.
I just want, if we can look into extending the hours for her and the other businesses, I think that would probably be more of a priority right now. So that we boost the time back maybe to 9:30, because I think what's going on is that people are out. They, they haven't been out in some time and their social lives.
They want to stay out.
And they're not leaving. So, um, and you really just can't kick people out. It's just not good business practice. So if we can extend it for the local businesses, I think if you could work that magic with, uh, with Gary, that would be great, so.
Yeah, that's all, and thank you so much for even putting it forward. That's awesome of you guys. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome, Annie.
There hasn't been a lot of help in our industry for the whole coronavirus thing, and, uh, every little bit does help, so thank you. And have a wonderful night, and I won't take up any of your time.
Thanks, Annie. You too as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else with, uh, public comment? I'm going to, once again, unmute all. Maria, Mrs. Hunter?
No comment tonight.
Okay, it looked like you started to say something. All right. Anyone else? Okay. So then we'll close public comment. All right, so we'll move on to board member comment. I just have a couple of quick things. So as Annie Mcginnis brought up earlier this week, I signed a new executive order establishing emergency regulations to permit temporary waivers of zoning code to provide for outdoor business activities. This includes the use of parking lots, sidewalks, parking spaces, and other areas for engaging in business activity such as outdoor dining. Uh, this order is specifically targeted toward restaurants in the village that are waiting for phase three to begin before opening their doors to diners. Uh, so the process to do this is as simple as we can make it. There's a brief one-page application that the code enforcement officer put together for us to the building department that has no fee attached, and approvals are very quick. We're trying to turn these around very, very quickly. The goal is to kickstart revenue for our businesses, especially restaurants after they've been closed for so long. Uh, the executive order is available on the website. It gives a lot of detail on there. Uh, and just contact the building department for any further details, and, uh, Annie, we will take those comments under advisement and see what we can do with that to make it even better. Um, so with regard to COVID, our efforts as a community during this crisis have been working. As of this afternoon, uh, we've had 10,635 positive cases with 470 deaths in Orange County. But the new cases and deaths, while still occurring, are well within the parameters to stay on track for phase three on June 23rd. They're only incrementing, if at all, by single digits, which is a very positive sign. Uh, and the 23rd is when phase three is scheduled to begin as long as things continue trending the way they are. Uh, so to start within phase three, restaurants and the service industry will open with 50% capacity indoors. Uh, and if we continue to trend in the right direction by July 9th, we'll be completely back to normal operations. So if we all continue to work together, follow best practices, this pandemic will soon be behind us. So please, continue to wear your masks, practice social distancing, and I look forward to seeing as many of you as possible in the near future. Thank you. Uh, let's go down to what is normally the end of the dais. Trustee Graziano?
Well, I'd like to thank, I'm glad to see everybody in, in the room tonight, even though it's a virtual meeting. Um, I like to see this many faces, squares, as you want to call them, in the room. Um, it's, it's really nice to see that this much participation in, in what's, what is your local government. Um, I'm going to echo what Tim said as well. I mean, I'm watching these viruses and opening businesses as well in the Mid Hudson region. I have two of them. Um, one in Rockland, one in Westchester, and the numbers going down are on really good trend right now, you know. Regardless of putting politics aside, the, the virus is something that we're all fighting together as one group of people. It doesn't matter what side you are. It's, it's indiscriminate, and we're doing this together, and we're doing it well together. And to see that the test results are down under 1% in the Mid Hudson region is a fantastic result, and I like to see that get down to zero as fast as possible. So I congratulate everybody. Be, be kind, think of your neighbor. Um, I know it's a pain in the neck, but it's a simple thing to go out, if you're within six feet of somebody, wear a mask. It's not that hard to do, and it's, you know, think of the people in the first line responders and the essential workers who've been working through this whole ordeal. They have been wearing masks eight to 10 hours a day, every day 40 to 60 hours a week, just so they can bring you food, keep you in water, pick up your garbage, um, be on the front lines. You know, pick you up in an ambulance, work the hospitals, think of all the equipment they've been wearing. So you can be courteous for the five, 10 minutes to a half hour you're running to a store and wear a mask for everybody else's benefit. I just think that's simple and something that we can do. And, you know, as we're getting through this, and as Tim mentioned, we're, we're on schedule for phase three, and what we're all shooting for is to keep these numbers low so we can get to phase four, which is education. And that's what I'm really interested to see, what the guidance is going to be going forward with the education, because, you know, something that a lot of our residents have brought up and they're, you know, and I really feel for them, and I think this is something that, you know, we should, we as a board, and I'm going to do this, do it as well, reach out to our representatives and, and Senator Scoobers and Assemblyman Schmidt and say, "Listen, we have a group of children that are graduating this year, and if we can get to stage four, and we can, you know, that's in the beginning of July, I think if we should be able to schedule an outdoor graduation for these children at the end of July." I mean, if you take them and the people, you know, their parents or whoever that raised them, two people per guest, two guests per, um, graduate, put it in a football stadium, there should be no reason why you can't socially distance people around to see it, stand in a football stadium and have a graduation that these kids can be proud of. And I think that's something that we as a board should all stand for and all work towards and try and help out and get these kids moving and get them the recognition they deserve. So again, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Be well, be healthy, be safe, and work together, and we'll, we'll beat this virus.
Thanks, Chris. Well said. Uh, trustee Gomez?
Yes. Um, I just want to have a little statement about what's going on in society today in regards to the rioting and stuff. I first would like to say that when what happened with, to George Floyd was a true tragedy, and those who participate should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. As a retired New York City police officer with 22 years of law enforcement experience and a minority myself, I am also very upset on what has happened the past few weeks. I have worked some of the toughest streets in Brooklyn and the Bronx, and am a member of the community policing unit and was responsible for training rookies at the precinct level for this street.
All right, whoever has that background noise, can you please mute yourself?
I believe in two things, obey the law and respect your fellow man. To me, all humanity matters, no matter who you are. Mr. Floyd's life mattered, and so does the lives of those responsible ones that. Yes, they should be punished. I should, the people who break the law all over. They are bad people in every type of job, and I stand proudly with my brothers and sisters in blue who follow the law and who are good, honest people. These are the same people who charged him headfirst during 9/11 to help without thinking of their own safety. These are the people who protect our loved ones and neighbors who risk their lives to save others. These people also deserve our respect in return. There is no room in my heart for racism and hate. What we should be fighting for is better education for all and faith in our beliefs. Love comes in many shapes and sizes, and this is first taught at home. In my life, I too have been personally discriminated against because of the color of my skin and because I speak a different language. While I am a minority, I never let that define me or use it as an excuse to not work damn hard for everything I've earned in my life. Change begins, begins with oneself, once, within oneself, and then it comes, it can start to change others. I will keep doing what I think is best for and pray for peace. I stand for all life, no matter what race, religion, or culture. I believe in humanity and that we are stronger together. I believe in love, peace, and understanding, and I hope we all are teaching our children the same. Thank you. God bless. Have a good night, Paul.
Thank you. Jesus, very nicely done. Uh, trustee Burek?
That was really nice, Jesus. Thank you. Um, I am going to echo, uh, Jesus's sentiments a bit, and I would just like to share some of my thoughts uh, with everyone about what's going on. I know that, um, the world right now is tense and uncertain, and we have a lot to learn. We have to learn to respect one another first and foremost before we can get to where we need to be as a country. I've been spending a lot of time talking to my kids, especially my nine-year-old, about recent events. Even though they don't watch the news, they hear and they see everything. Um, I want to make sure that amidst the chaos, my kids feel safe, both physically and mentally. Um, what I have learned in this process is that we should all take a step back and look at the world through the lens of a child. I have learned more from my daughter and these three months at home with her than I could ever teach her during her nine years on this earth. The innocence, purity, and genuine goodness of children give me hope for our world. Um, below, I'm going to read something that she and I spoke about about a week ago. Um, I paraphrased her thoughts a bit, uh, just to hit the point home, um, but the essence of her intent remains the same. We should try to empathize rather than judge those who have different experiences than us. While we may not agree on the surface, at our very core, we are the same. We breathe the same air, blood runs through all of our veins. We all experience different levels of emotions, but at the end of the day, we are all just human beings who are trying to make the world a better place for our children and generations beyond. It seems that we all have common goals, so why is everyone always fighting? While I'll admit she is definitely insightful for her age, I still have my work as a parent cut out for me because there are some who believe that violence and destruction is the answer. Property being destroyed, lives being taken, and entire cities burning to the ground. I don't want that to be the answer my children find when they look for solutions to their problems. I don't want this to be the face of the America we live in and what they see. They deserve better. I instead want them to see people who unite and stand up for what they believe in. I want them to see those who persist peacefully in an effort to effect positive change. I want them to see kindness and compassion amongst people from all walks of life. I want them to see police officers and all first responders as the heroes that they are and to always extend them the respect and courtesy they deserve as they lay their lives on the line every day so that we don't have to, especially during our darkest times as a nation. I will work my hardest to make sure my children never lose sight of what is important, to always be kind and to always do for others when you can. You can land on opposite sides of an issue with your peers and still remain respectful and empathetic. There is no place in this world for the hate that exists, and it starts at the home with what our children see. We must do better. Thank you all, and good night.
Thank you.
Amen.
Trustee Jacomazo? You're muted.
I know. I got it. Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, offer my apologies. I know a lot of people, I, I get a lot of inbox messages. I get a lot of calls. I get, I handle the social media for the village, so I do get a certain amount of inbox messages. Uh, trust me, I read everything. Um, with the way my schedule is, I try to get to everything as quickly as possible. So if I ever owed you a call and did not respond in a timely manner, like I said, I offer my apologies. I know that, um, I spoke to somebody before I came on here who had been trying to reach me for a couple of days. With the city opening back up and my kind of workload increasing, it, it's, it's become, um, it's become difficult, so I will get through this, and once again, I just wanted to throw it out there that we are here for you, this entire board, and, um, your concerns matter to us. So, uh, once again, my apologies if, we are working on a lot of different things at once. There's a lot of irons in the fire, and a friend of mine said, "Maybe you have too many things, too many irons in the fire." Um, and that may be true, but there's a lot we want to get done with this board, so, um, I will call you back. I will inbox you. I will return your emails. It may take me a day, but, um, your concerns matter to me and the rest of this board, so stay safe, stay well, and that's it. That's all I have.
Thanks, Andrew. Great. Desiree?
And I saved an entire page for Andrew, and he spoke like two seconds. And I was able to type it as he was speaking, which was amazing.
Woo-hoo!
I know. Well, I don't know if Annie's still on, but I'm happy to announce that the town is now going to be issuing garage sale licenses as of tomorrow. Um, there are.
Woo-hoo!
Oh, was that Annie? She's still on? Okay.
I watched the right time.
Uh, yes, she did. Uh, there'll be a video on Families Woodbury tomorrow morning as soon as I record it. There's limitations, though. Only 10 people are allowed to be at your sale at any time, so you're going to have to watch that. And of course, everyone has to wear masks, and you have to practice social distancing and all that other stuff, so, um, basically what we said before, just now we can start tomorrow. Um, the, my office, the town clerk's office and town hall, as well as the other town offices are open. Um, we are allowing one person, oh, the sun's gone yet. We are allowing one person in at a time. Uh, you do have to wear a mask. They're asking that everyone bring... They're asking that everyone bring their own pen. You don't have your own pen, we will give you a pen that you can keep because we are trying to avoid cross-contamination, so. Hence, keeping the pen or bringing your own. Uh, same with payments, uh, if you're gonna pay with cash, please bring exact change cuz we won't be making you change. We don't wanna give you someone else's money that could possibly be contaminated. And when you come into my town clerk's office, you do have to sign in so that if there is an incident, we do have a track of who was in the office at around the same time as the person who may have been infected. I know these are, these are rules, but like, um, trustee Burke just said and trustee Graziano, patience is a virtue and if we all do this, do this together, we will fight this thing and these are the way we came up with the best way to be able to reopen at the town hall office. So that's all I wanted to say. I know it's not village-related, but I know we've been getting a lot of calls about garage sales and I'm happy to report that as of tomorrow, we will be able to issue the permit.
Just gonna touch on something Desiree was just talking about with regard to the town as it, as it applies to the village. So we, we are at full staffing in all of our departments, uh, because our departments are essential at this point with everything trying to get kickstarted with the economy. Uh, we are not opening village hall to the public at least at the earliest until phase three and probably phase four. Uh, that's for safety reasons, for a couple of, couple of reasons. One, I wanna discuss eat, with each department head before we open up each of these departments to the public. We wanna have safety plans in place as is dictated, uh, by the governor's executive orders and this is good practice. So we're gonna be taking our time and doing it right, but we're not ready to do that yet at the village level. Um, so I wanna go to Mr. Wyatt. You have anything from the highway?
I do. Um, Saturday, June thirteenth will be our electronic drop-off and shredding event. It will be from eight A M to twelve P M. Um, we are asking everyone to stay in their cars. All employees will be taking everything out of your cars for you and so we can keep it a, a safe environment. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, are there any other department heads that I missed? I don't think so. Or I go to Kelly?
I got a question for Rob.
Go ahead.
Oh, uh, Rob, is that, uh, shredding also or just the electronics?
That'll be shredding as well from eight A M to twelve P M. Um, please don't leave any extra documents at twelve P M. I can't be held responsible for any documents leave on the front bench. That's happened in the past and I just don't, all those documents left there.
I know a lot of people looking forward to that. Uh, Kelly, you know who?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, well then, I think I got all the department heads, all the board members with no further business. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
I'll take, uh, the motion from trustee Gomez with a second from trustee Jacque Camaza. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about I? Thank you, everybody. Good night. See you next time.
Good night.